The council meeting of November 5th, 2025 will now come to order at 7:30 PM. And the audience is invited to join council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of Switzerland. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bresser.
Present.
Ms. Gilchrist, Ms. Heeman.
Here.
Mr. Limpert.
Present.
Mr. Madden.
Present.
Mr. Mari.
Here.
Mr. Skarle.
Present.
Mr. Shimsky.
Here.
Uh, thank you. Uh, be- before we move into business, I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in the democratic process yesterday during yesterday's elections. Um, I know from experience, it takes a lot to put yourself out there. So whether you prevailed or not, I have a super high amount of respect for everybody who participated and put theirselves out there. Uh, so congratulations on that. Uh, approval of minutes, if there are no additions or corrections, the council meeting minutes of October 21st, 2025 are approved as written. There is one item on the agenda being requested for suspension this evening on first reading. That is Resolution 2025 dash 103. Uh, moving into reports, Mayor Daly Jones, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mr. President. Thank you. Congratulations to all who were elected and reelected to positions within the city of North Olmsted and our region yesterday. Your leadership and dedication are greatly appreciated as we move forward with the many projects and initiatives that strengthen our community. Also acknowledging the reelection, um, not just of our, our council members, of our law director, and to extend our sincere thanks to Finance Director Kopfer, who has given 28 years of service to the city of North Olmsted. We appreciate her many years of dedication, commitment, and contributions to our city's financial operations. And sincere thanks to Councilwoman of Ward Four, Mary Ellen Heeman, uh, who will be moving on to another position in our region, but who has represented, uh, Ward Four of North Olmsted for many years. We thank you. The North Olmsted Recreation Center is celebrating its 50th birthday this November. Throughout the month, visitors can enjoy weekly giveaways and more as part of the celebration. I would highly encourage you, uh, to, uh, let your residents know that they should take a walk through the Rec Center. They have, um, a lot of display boards up, uh, symbolizing 50 years of, of, of that Recreation Center and, and the many changes that have gone on, uh, uh, to that building over the years. The city's Halloween event was a great success with approximately 50 families registering and bringing their preschool-aged children to enjoy the decorations and activities. Our staff and volunteers did an outstanding job transforming City Hall into a fun and welcoming space for our youngest residents. Work continues on Phase Two of the North Olmsted Community Park Project. Major progress includes that, uh, preparations are underway for the installation of the new pickleball and tennis courts. The foundational work, uh, is in progress for the new splash pad. Completion of the new baseball field infield is, we're, we're right there this week. And, uh, with the construction of the new senior center parking lot, um, that is almost complete. Uh, one of the events that are typically held at, um, at the senior center, uh, was hosted today at Springvale. So I, along with, um, about a hundred other people, attended the annual international food cook-off. Uh, it's a great tradition that we have with our, uh, our senior center. And, um, the winning cuisine was the French, uh, the French dish of the, uh, stuffed chicken with champagne sauce on it. So that was, um, it was quite the culinary experience. And our senior center is expected to reopen Monday. And, uh, finally, the Citywide Leaf Collection began October 28th. This year, it started on the east side of the city. Uh, the crews will continue making passes across North Olmsted as part of the annual fall cleanup program. You can direct your residents to the city website, uh, and/or social media. We try to update residents as to which streets, uh, had been collected. Um, so, uh, people living near that area would then know that, that the, uh, uh, the leaf collection should be coming to them soon. And that, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Law, Gero, do you have a report this evening?
Uh, just a few comments. Thank you, Mr. President. Fun fact, follow-up to your report, Mayor, is, uh, for those of you who've been in North Olmsted for a considerable time, back to the seventies, you may remember that among the pictures, I would imagine, at the Rec Center of, the Rec Center through 50 years would be what our forefathers thought was a good idea to build a toboggan run. If you were here long enough, you may remember, uh, that there was actually two toboggan chutes constructed, uh, behind, roughly behind where Denny's is, and they would shoot off toward the side of the building, kind of angle back behind the building, to the surprise of perhaps no one, a short time later, they closed, uh, as a major safety threat to the children riding them. And in fact, I believe, uh, they were sinking into the ground because they, the ground wouldn't support it. Further fun fact, when I showed up on city council in 1998, uh, we were still paying for those. Uh, they were still carrying the debt for the bu- for the toboggan chutes that had been shipped to a landfill some 10 to 15 years earlier, for sure. So, uh, there is a colored his colorful history over at the Rec Center. Uh, that, uh, would certainly be at the top of the pile for, uh, interesting history over there. I wanted to also, uh, ex- express, uh, my, my thoughts about yesterday, Mr. President, and, and just say, you know, break this down into some new beginnings to, to Director, uh, elect, uh, Finance Elect Keegan Radoff, to, uh, our new newly-elected Ward Four Councilperson, uh, Maureen Carr, and then of course, Mary Ellen Heeman, uh, in her new beginning at the Clerk of Court's office in Rocky River. Uh, I wish you all the best of success, uh, in your new endeavors. And I hope you find the work to be rewarding, um, as you move forward with your positions. To the, uh, to the old timers here, uh, we've got, uh, you know, Councilman Bressard, excuse me, Council President Bressard, Councilman Skarle, Councilman Mari, and, and of course, Mayor Jones. Uh, I'm, I'm, uh, looking forward to continue to work with you, uh, throughout these next four years. Uh, thank you very much. Um, and I left off Councilwoman Gilchrist because she's, uh, went through the reelection. I congratulate her, her opponent as well, for, uh, entering the race and, and, and becoming a part of the process. Uh, Director Kopfer, I wish you the best, um, in your, uh, let's call it retirement at this point. But I wanted to, uh, say that, uh, I enjoyed working with you for, uh, since you were elected, uh, for the first time, uh, except for one year, half, almost a whole year that I, I was not on council.
Oh, I thought that meant you didn't like me for a while.
Yeah, no, right, I vanished. I vanished for like, vanished for like 10 months and resurfaced. But, uh, it, it's been a pleasure to work with you. I think that, uh, those who know you best know that you take great pride in your work. Uh, and we know you best for, I, I said this yesterday, and I meant it, is your faith, your family, and your friends. And you are rich in all of those, and for that, you will have happy days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate that. Uh, and I am a survivor of the North Olmsted toboggans.
You are, you are a miracle.
Oh, is that what's wrong with you?
I'm old enough to say that.
Didn't make that curve.
Uh, Director of Finance Kopfer, do you have a report this evening?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate Ke- Keegan Radoff and, uh, wish him the very best as he steps into the role of Director of Finance come January. I'm still gonna be here for a couple of months, people. I want council, to assure council and, of course, the administration, that I am committed to ensuring a smooth and responsible transition so that the residents of North Olmsted continue to be served. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director. Uh, moving into council committee reports, Councilman Limpert, Chairman of the Building Zoning and Development Committee, do you have a report this evening?
Uh, no report this evening, Mr. President. Um, but if I have a moment of personal privilege, first, I wanna, just further endorse the leaf pickup tracking. It's greatly improved over the years to where you can see which streets and what passes. So I'd encourage you to do that, to determine when your leaves go out. But, uh, related to the election, obviously, I, I welcome all those who have been reelected, those, um, who have been elected to new positions. I look forward to working with those or wish them the best of luck on those that leave. And I will save my comments with Ms. Kopfer for a later date because she's still working hard here and we enjoy it very much. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Heeman, Chairwoman of the Recreation, Public Parks, and Buildings Committee, do you have a report this evening?
I do not, but if I may have a moment of privilege, thank, thank you. Um, I, I will actually reserve my comments because I will be here through the end of December. But I would like to thank all of my colleagues for all of their help and support that they gave me in my campaign. I'd like to thank all of, uh, our residents who supported me greatly in that campaign. It was five suburbs, a lot of walking. I'm retiring the shoes I'm wearing when I go home. My campaign shoes. Uh, and, and each and every suburb was very welcoming. Um, and I am grateful to be leaving, uh, the residents of Ward Four in the very capable and competent hands of Maureen Carr. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Skarle, Chairman of the Finance Committee, do you have a report this evening?
No report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Madden, Chairman of the Environmental Control Committee, do you have a report this evening?
No report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shimsky, Chairman of the Public Safety, Health, and Welfare Committee, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. The Public Safety, Health, and Welfare Committee met on October 28th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Those in attendance were Committee Members Shimsky, Heeman, and Madden, Council Members Gilchrist, Limpert, Mari, and Skarle, Mayor Jones, the Director of Law, Finance, Safety, and Service, the Police Chief, and Sergeant Pietro and Gus. There was one item on the agenda, Resolution 2025 dash 102, a purchase of a Polaris Ranger XP 1000. Director Schofield opened with a brief description of the vehicle. Then Chief Wagner and Sergeant Pietro gave examples of things that have happened in North Olmsted where this vehicle would be valuable. The committee wanted more information about additional apparatuses that need to be purchased, and it was held in committee, and the, the meeting ended at 7:21 PM. The Public Safety, Health, and Welfare Committee met again tonight at 7:03 PM to discuss Resolution 2025 dash 102. Those in attendance were Committee Members Shimsky, Heeman, Madden, Council Members Limpert, Mari, and Skarle, Council President Bressard, Mayor Jones, Chief of Staff, Directors of Law, Finance, HR, Economic Development, Safety, Recreation, and Gus. The prices of additional apparatus and training for the vehicle were discussed. After some more discussion, a motion was made and seconded to recommend Resolution 2025 dash 102 to the rest of council by a vote of three to zero, and the meeting ended at 7:12 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Mari, Chairman of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, do you have a report this evening?
Uh, no report tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any letters or communications to come before council at this time?
No, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Uh, we will now move into audience participation. Thank you for attending tonight's council meeting. Public comment offers the opportunity for members of the public to share information and bring issues and concerns to the attention of city council members. It is not a debate, and public comment speakers should not expect a back-and-forth exchange. Council members may ask clarifying questions of the speaker, of city staff, or of fellow council members. Those attending city council meetings, um, should show the same respect to others that they wish to have shown to them. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to address council, please come to the podium, state and spell your name and address for the clerk. And if you live in a city other than North Olmsted, please state the name of that city and proceed with your comments. You will have up to five minutes.
My name is Robert Sharp, S H R P. I live at 25407 Butternut Ridge here in North Olmsted. And I'm gonna read my statement tonight, if I may. I've been here for 47 years. I'm also a member of the Expanding Southeast Area Growth Association, which is our homeowner association. Due to our opposition to the proposed development in our historic district, we're forced to spend time and money during this upcoming holiday season to protect our area. Because some of us are now older, me, this is especially unsettling. We should not have to be here, protecting this unique, irreplaceable historic district and our investments within it. That should be a high priority for our city leaders, is protecting this area as stated in the Historic District Guidelines. Along with activating the Expanding Homeowner Group, we are now collecting petition signatures showing opposition to the project. We have dozens and dozens of signatures. We'll present them in the future. Not one person has declined to sign this petition that we've encountered. Every single person is angry, and every single person signed it. We previously submitted a report that clearly provided ample, specific evidence that this proposal is not consistent with the 2025 master plan. I handed that out in the last meeting. Since the historic design, district design guidelines were used as a partial justification, we will soon submit a similar report showing how the project is in conflict with the goals of the guidelines. And we'll provide very specifics in that. Let me tell you how all the alterations on Butternut have affected me personally and my family. The seller of my house failed to notify me of the coming Great Northern Boulevard. Wonderful. Didn't tell me, and now here I am with two young children. I went ahead with the purchase and endured a long construction, which involved cars using my front lawn as the bypass of the intersection. It cost me 13,000 square feet of my yard. My yard was turf many times. I now get to, I now get to clean up soiled diapers and other similar items tossed from cars. Then a truck going west on Butternut to south on Great Northern lost its boat trailer, which went diagonal across my entire backyard until it crashed into the property to the east. If someone was in its path, they would have been seriously injured or worse. Again, I had children. Then I was involved in a crash exiting my driveway. Just too much traffic. I couldn't get out. It happened. Then my son was in an accident at Kennedy Ridge and Butternut. Then a truck going from westbound Butternut to south on Great Northern at high speed crashed through my fence there on the, what's, I guess, I don't know if you call it Great Northern or Columbia. It's confusing, but in the back of my house. Crashed through my fence, the wheels spinning, the truck spattered the back of my house with mud, rock, and rocks. The truck then smashed into my camper. I have a driveway off Columbia Road also. It smashed into my camper, pushed my camper, threw my garage door, and then at high speed crashed through the fence again, taking off. If anybody had been in my backyard, they'd be in terrible condition, terrible trouble. It was $14,000 in damage that I, that, uh, happened there. Fortunately, no one was in its path. Then my $500 front picture window was shot out. Tempered glass, it was $500. Then a $250 side window was shot out. Would any of this have happened if Butternut hadn't have been altered to the extent it was? I doubt it. But that's progress, isn't it? I paid the price, but we need stability now on that street. This is one story, and I'm sure there's many here, very similar. Enough is enough. My daughter grew up in the house. She now lives in a suburb of Indianapolis. When she was told of the plan, she was upset, and she's no history buff. She said the city she lives in now had a historic area, and I remember it, with cute buildings, a historic area. This was all demolished, all of it, and replaced with modern generic structures. She said, "No one can look back at any history in the city. Its charm is gone." It's like any other generic city that you drive through with nothing to notice except Wendy's and Taco Bell. There's nothing left there. She said it was a big mistake, and everybody in the city knows it was a big mistake. We have to stabilize Butternut Ridge before it's too late. Too much has happened already. We cherish Butternut Ridge, but we've had enough. We need city support to stop this project from happening. And again, I will be submitting a more detailed report on the historic guidelines, uh, district guidelines that, that should be adhered to. And, uh, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Tony Sapienza, 25760 Butternut Ridge Road. I grew up in North Olmsted. When I was born here, there was no I-90, there was no 480, there was no mall. We keep putting things in here. We call it progress. But where does progress end and, and stability begin? We take away everything. If you take away your historical district out of North Olmsted, what are we left with? Really, think about it. If we take it away, are we left with just banks, car lots? Is that what we want to be known for? Shopping, a mall? We don't want to be known for that. We want to have something that's desirable. A lot of us moved to North Olmsted and Butternut because it is desirable. But once you start pilling it apart, li- like an onion, one layer at a time, where does it end? If we rezone Butternut Ridge and you build 45 houses on one side of the road, it's been rezoned. There's no stopping it. There's the other side of the road with nine acres. How many houses do we put in there? We can't stop it once it's rezoned. They say peak traffic is 30 cars. I don't believe that. They don't account for landscapers, carpenters, uh, trash removal. They don't account for any of that. And then you go across the street, they say, what are they gonna say there? That it's only 60, 60 more cars peak? You can't get out of your driveway now on Butternut. And I know it's not all Butternut traffic. It comes from a lot of places. And I'm not against, uh, building. But to take your historical district and to systematically disassemble it is just wrong. It's crazy. It's crazy. It's, it separates our city from a lot of cities out there. Fairview Park, anything like that. What are we gonna just be known for? Just houses, restaurants, banks? We gotta keep something. We gotta keep the metro park. We go, our area down there at Frostville. We gotta keep Butternut Ridge. We gotta keep what we have because once it's gone, it doesn't come back. Then they, you think people are gonna want to move into a city? That there's really nothing there for them besides shopping? No, no, they're not. We need to keep something that's charm, that brings charm to the city. Something where people could drive down the road and go, "Look at at these nice houses. Look at how they kept this, this street. Look at how they kept this section of, of North Olmsted." That's what we need to do. This talk about rezoning is absolutely nuts. We do not need to destroy our historical center, district. We just don't need to do it. I mean, is there anybody here for developing North Olmsted? Anybody? No. Is there anybody here for strongly opposing this? We went down the street. We collected, uh, you know, signatures. We passed outside. Not one person, not one person said, "I don't want that. I'm for this." Everybody, and, uh, and let me tell you, a lot of people don't know about this. This is just starting to spread to other streets. It's starting to spread to other cities. People want to protect our, our historical district. If you don't, like Bob says, it's just another generic city. Where do you stop? 45 houses on one side of the road? 60, 80 houses on the other side of the road? What other part of Butternut Ridge can we grab? And then you widen the road? And I heard we have no plans of widening the road. No plans of putting in street lights, traffic lights. I don't believe that. I believe that down the line, they will widen the road and stuff. And when we say, "Well, we were told that they wouldn't do that," they'll say, "That was the last administration. That wasn't us. We didn't tell you that."
Mr. Sapienza, that, that's five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi there. Tammy Swainy, uh, 25769 Butternut Ridge Road. I am usually very prepared, and I'm not this time, so I apologize upfront. I won't take up too much time. I'm just here asking you guys to consider, just to consider. We, and I, I don't know if this is appropriate, but, um, we have heard that, um, members of the council were not made aware that, um, the mayor was in conversation with the developer. Now, that came from our developer, or the developer that met with us. I, I would just like to know if, if those are a true statement. I mean, have you guys been made aware of this or up to this point?
Tammy, we, we don't do back and forth. This is your opportunity to speak to us.
I'm just asking the question. Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. President, can I have the floor? Councilman Skarle. Thank you. Yes, you are correct. We haven't been made aware of this project yet.
You, you have not. Okay. All right. Um, so, some things to consider. You've heard, um, really good comments, but we want to just, I want to state facts, right? So none of this was part of the master plan. The, the land use document in 3.9 of that master plan that was just approved in June, made no mention of it. There was a, a big rollout to the public. Um, I heard that it, I, I've heard some really good feedback from it. During that, during that rollout, there was a lot of conversation about redeveloping the Lorraine Corridor, the mall area. I think all of your residents are in agreement that that needs some serious love right there. Um, when, when the, um, breakout sessions happened, I was looking at all the responses because I wasn't able to make it myself. But Town Homes was listed towards the very bottom of the type of housing that your residents are looking for. So I just, I just want you to consider that. Uh, the people that we've talked to, um, and I echo your statement. Everyone that I've asked to sign my, um, petition has signed it. Uh, there were, I'm gonna, in all fairness, there were six people I told, men, shared that. And it was because they saw my clipboard, so they ran away. Like, they were just like, "Well, no, not interested." And so I was, I'm like, "Okay." But regardless, um, my home was built in 1949. You walk inside of it, and it looks like a brand-new home. And quite honestly, I intentionally bought that because it's a brick home. I wanted something that had been built in the past because you, you just don't make them like. like that anymore without spending an arm and a leg. So, I also echo, when I, when I came to North Olmsted eight years ago, I thought that this is the place to live. I saw that there was some distress in the city, but I trust, I trust city council. Everyone has eyes to see, and that takes a while, but it's going to get turned around. But I was looking for something that was charming, something close to 480. We don't have a bus to downtown Cleveland anymore. That was a bummer. Maybe we can get that back. And putting town homes in a mature residential area does not make sense. Any residential area to put, to squeeze town homes in does not make sense. And hey, by the way, we have seven acres for sale on the west side of Lorraine, the west side of Lorraine Road. Maybe we could look at that. I'm sure I'm going to think of many more things to say to you guys, but I just want you to just be very thoughtful and just consider our, our comments. I'm sure we're going to have much more to, to, to share with you guys later as we go forward in this process. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Priscilla Sprano Wiles, 25746 Butternut Ridge Road. Apologies for reading, but I don't think I could be as clear if I spoke extemporaneously. The Sterns family traveled from Vermont to their newly purchased land in the Northwest Territory in what is now North Olmsted, Ohio. The land was sold to them from Charles Olmsted, Aaron Olmsted's son. Several of the Sterns family traveled back to Vermont, but David decided to stay. He is considered the first permanent settler of our fair city. For the sake of perspective, this was the same year the Duke of Wellington defeated Napoleon at the Battle of Waterloo. It was 1815. Currently, no fewer than 132 homes occupy Butternut Ridge Road. Today, there are only 15 left from the 19th century. Think the completion of the Erie Canal, the Alamo, the Gold Rush, the Civil War, the purchase of Alaska, the westward expansion, the Gilded Age, the dedication of the Statue of Liberty, and Custer's Last Stand at the Battle of Little Big Horn. The people who built and lived in these particular homes on Butternut Ridge Road experienced these events. At the dawn of the 20th century, McKinley was assassinated, and Theodore Roosevelt became the president. As the first half of the century rolled by, the Panama Canal opened, Charles Lindbergh had his first solo transatlantic flight, the U.S. entered World War I, the 19th Amendment was ratified, the Star Spangled Banner was adopted as the country's national anthem, the stock market crashed, and the Great Depression ensued. During this time, homes were built on Butternut Ridge Road. Fifty-one of them still stand, built between 1900 and the onset of World War II. Like all over our great country, North Olmsted experienced a post-World War II building boom. No fewer than 56 homes were built on Butternut Ridge Road, using up just about every bit of available land for housing. The U.S. engaged in the Korean and Vietnam Wars and the arms race, Brown versus the Board of Education at Topeka ended segregation in our schools, and Jonas Salk developed the polio vaccine. Peanuts comic strip was published for the first time, and people sat in their living rooms right on Butternut Ridge Road and on a black-and-white television set watched Neil Armstrong take the first step on the moon. With over 300 streets in the city of North Olmsted, this one street, just one, Butternut Ridge Road, is intrinsically bound to our nation's history. Homes that stand today from 1825 through 1975 represent 200 of the United States of America's 249 years in the making. We, those of us here tonight, and those whom we represent, are the volitional custodians of this street and the homes that line it. We take our stewardship of the crown jewel of North Olmsted, the Butternut Historic District, very seriously. And with respect, we ask that you all do as well. Thank you.
Before our next speaker, Councilman Skarle would like to say something.
Yes, please. I'd like to respond to that statement I made. I'm aware of this project as well as my colleagues are. We just have not formally seen anything brought to council yet. So, that's what I want to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. My name is Ed Wiles. I'm at 25746 Butternut Ridge Road. I want to congratulate everybody who got reelected. Congratulations. I want to thank the mayor and the director of development and the safety director who met very graciously, spent a lot of time, and very receptive, and just thankful for the representation we have here in North Olmsted. My main objection to this proposal has been from the start that it's, it's rezoning the street. You know, we all purchased our homes at different times, but all with the idea that it was a historic district, which most of us, either you like that or you don't, we like it. We love our house with its ties to Charles Olmsted, but definitely with the idea that it's all single-family homes and felt a certain amount of safety. And I ask you guys to consider that stewardship in any plan to rezone. I, please take it very seriously. I mean, we've invested time, money, effort, raised our families there. We have a lot of memories there. Rezoning, I almost, I think one of the reasons I'm a little anxious about this is it's almost like it's being done with, in the same way that eminent domain would be, like where we feel it's so important that we must change what has been for 200 years and, and make this development a possibility or reality. And I, I don't think that's fair, one, and I don't think it's being a good steward of our historic district. I want to thank our neighbors, too, who faithfully come out, and people who don't close the doors on us. I mean, these are different times. I only took like 25 of the, of the houses on Butternut to, to talk to them about the petition and so forth, and everybody was home, open the door, "Hey, how you doing? What's up?" And it's like, it's, it restores my faith in people, and, and you guys, you have a tough job. The city has a tough job with a lot of vacancies, and I just appreciate all your efforts. And just ask, this, this project really just, and when it comes right down to it, it, it doesn't fit in this, in this neighborhood. So, thank you.
Steve Clark, 25795 Butternut Ridge Road. First, I want to thank all of you. I mean, it, it's a big job. I ran for council once. I know what that's like. I do want to say to you also that, yeah, we're part of the, we have knocked on a ton of doors. And I, I tell you, in my experience of having doors slammed when I was running, a lot of fun.
I know the feeling.
Few dogs. Don't forget the dogs. But all kidding aside, these people have been very gracious and very good to us in our discussions. I wanted, I've only been here five years. I love North Olmsted. I love the people, and I hate the, even going through this discussion. My wife feels the same, and everybody out here feels the same way, and I'm sure you guys feel the other way. What I'm trying to say is that the overwhelming, if you want to go door-to-door with me, you're welcome, but these people do not want this project. They just do not. The traffic is bad enough. I mean, it's like a racetrack out there, but I think you folks know that already. I, I would rather just suggest that you thoughtfully, as you say, consider our wishes, and, and believe me, there are so many people that are joining us, and I'm not overreacting to this. Just feel that, and I'm not as eloquent as Ed and his wife, they're very, very good. I, I would like to leave you with this. Rather than to keep pushing, jamming something down, that we take a step back and perhaps think, instead of having a whole bunch of the community unhappy with people, and it's spreading. I'm at the barber shop. I hear about it. You know, I'm walking with a sign, and people pull over from their car and want a sign. Couldn't, could we not just take a step back and figure a way that we could, I know this is idealistic, but work together? Could we not find a better solution than having to be here and take up a lot of your time? And I respect it, I really do. I respect each one of you. So, that's it. You know, no quick answers, whatever. I just don't think the project is a silver bullet for us. I think it'll come back to bite us later. And I say us because after five years, I consider myself certainly a citizen here. I care about each one of you, and please think about what we're suggesting. Thank you.
Elaine Freed, 27615 Butternut Ridge. I, my house is the last house of the area that had been downtown North Olmsted, diagonally across the street from the Marathon Station. And we moved in 77. When we got there and learned more about the neighborhood, we learned that the family who was in the place and did a lot of renovation during the 40s, 50s, had decided they couldn't stay there anymore. They loved the neighborhood, but they couldn't stay there anymore because they couldn't stand to look at a gas station. By that time, of course, the Unitarian Church had been moved, and my understanding was that it had lots of serious issues, and so therefore, being in the situation of getting money for their property and moving was advantageous. Still there, in that section where Porter and Butternut and Lorraine come together, was downtown North Olmsted. It is where the CVS was, or is now. There were two or three-story apartments with shops on the down level. On the other side of the street where the car lot is, there were other homes, but there were, again, shops with apartments and so forth upstairs. Now, this area was not the best-looking in the city, but I do remember it and place by place moved and left. The gas station is still there. The corner is always very busy. With the school building, there's been a lot of change. However, the traffic situation, as bad as it is, is much better than before with the old buildings. So, there has been some change in that end of Butternut, but the traffic is horrible. People use it not only for school issues, but they use it as a shortcut to get from 480 over to the other side of town. Last week, during the night, I heard little noise, and I saw some flashing yellow lights, and I'm thinking, "What in the world is the city doing at this time of night?" I looked out the window, and it wasn't the city. It was a tractor-trailer creeping along the road up to Porter, and then it made a turn. And that's not the only time we've seen tractor-trailers make that shortcut. So, working to preserve Butternut Ridge is really important. The street itself is not super wide, and if you are walking along that area, especially in places where there are no sidewalks, you're right on the edge of the road. So, I'm hoping that some consideration can be given to taking another look at the city and seeing if there is a better solution. Thank you.
My name is Bob Perry. I live at 27150 Butternut Ridge Road. We, we bought our house in 1976 and lived there and raised our kids, who went to Butternut School and North Olmsted High School. And when I retired from being a planning director in Westlake, we had thought about moving out of the city, and we looked a lot of places because we were looking for a ranch house. And we're in an older two-story home. And we didn't really find what we liked. We really loved where we were. We liked Butternut Ridge Road, street of all single-family homes. And so, instead of moving out of the city, we decided to stay and build a, an addition on the back of the house so we'd have one-floor living. And we just figured, "We'll just live here for the rest of our lives." Butternut is all single-family homes, and all the Century Homes that are on it. Our house is now 105 years old, and we've maintained it as best we can. And I'm really concerned about the idea of rezoning and having high-density housing right on Butternut, because there are some large parcels, homes that have large backyards. And I think if you do it once, it's going to be like a Lay's potato chip. You can't stop. You'll, you'll set a precedent. Somebody across the street has, I hear, nine acres. That'll be asked to be rezoned. There's property up, a couple houses for me that have some back land. They'll come in and want to develop and sell their land to a developer. And pretty soon, the houses, the older houses, won't be kept up, and they'll end up getting lesser value. Somebody will buy it, and buy it, and tear it down. And eventually, you won't have a historic district. You'll have a bunch of new multifamily homes, houses or apartments, townhouses, or whatever, but it won't be a historic district. And that'll be a real shame. Probably won't affect us. I don't know how long we're going to live, but we're going to stay here as long as we can. And I would hate to see Butternut Ridge Road change into a new multifamily kind of housing area. There's plenty of places on Lorraine Road. There's plenty of places on other major arterials that aren't historic districts that that kind of development should go into. That's all I have to say.
Hi. Jim Wozniak, 26487 Butternut Ridge Road. Retired city planner from Bay Village and born and raised in North Olmsted. Growing up here as a kid, I used to ride my bike down the middle of Butternut Ridge Road. Of course, I'd never do that today. And years back, maybe 10, 15 years ago, when I was afraid Shorewest was going to put condos behind my parcel because my neighbor was selling theirs and thus having enough land to split it, me and a neighbor purchased three acres so that would, wouldn't happen. So, now, what I'm asking now is to encourage zoning and planning, not to rezone any other parcels in Butternut Ridge Road, because not only will it open it up across the street, but even my, my house could be rezoned and put parcels back there, which I would never do, but there's more than one, one set of parcels that could be done. So, I'm, I'm just asking for encouragement to negate the rezone. to negate the rezoning. And I'm not sure why it even passed Building Department. I mean, if somebody requested a rezoning of a property on Butternut, I would have just said no. And it would have been done. Done deal. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments from the audience.
My name is Donald Primash. I live at 6064 Stafford Drive, North Olmsted. I've been here for the past, this will be my fourth meeting now. At the last meeting, I listened to your reports, and I didn't hear how I could make Donald Primash's life better or what we could do to make Donald Primash happy. 16 years, and you're not done yet, Mayor. Since the last meeting, three weeks, since the last meeting, three weeks of it, throwing footballs on the front yard, kicking the balls, whacking the balls at the front of the house, it hasn't stopped. The woman in the house, this is all at 6078 Stafford, okay? Everything I say here, retaliation. The woman in the house takes off wherever she goes, leaves six kids in the front yard on Saturday, the 25th, at 4:00 p.m. From the last meeting, October 21st, I now have electric bike skid marks on the sidewalk and the apron of the driveway. I need housing, I need a housing inspector, Mayor. I need a housing inspector to make a report on the damage. The bike marks cannot be power washed off for the next to five to seven years. There was four bikes at this house, 6078 Stafford, four bikes, these electric bikes, at one time. Now I see a small electric bike on the front porch. Everyone in this house rides it. It was there the day after I saw the skid marks. Four boys in this development have electric bikes and they come to this house at 6078 Stafford. In the summer, I, you, in the summer, using my sidewalk and apron of my driveway, going up my apron and that, putting all the skid marks on it, I paid $10,000 for my driveway. And every year since I've had it, I think it's eight to 10 years, I put two gallons of these, two-gallon buckets of this sealer on it. I go to 130th and 150th in Brook Park. Each five-gallon pail is $200. It takes two of them. It's $400 a year to put this down. I do it, 73-year-old man. I put it down with a 14-inch roller, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00, 12:00 p.m. in the afternoon. You better be done by 12 o'clock because the vapors that come off of this stuff will get you higher than a kite. Friction under the wheel melts the rubber, fuses it to the plastic. When the bike goes into a skid, the bottom of it, friction causes heat. The rubber comes off of it and it bends itself in the plastic. It's not coming off, not for five or seven years. Even if you power wash it, it is not coming off. Okay, I'm done with that. Now, I'm going to go to the next story. You'll like this one. Friday, October 31st, Halloween. I went out there about 5:00 o'clock and I leaped low so the kids could come up the driveway and they could, they wouldn't have any old leaves around. And I ended up by the curb and I'm raking it all in a pile and everything. And I'm kind of leaning on the rake, taking a little break. I was raking the leaves off the curb by the property line. Now, I'm looking at this house a little bit. I saw the girl with the blonde hair who lives at 6238 Stafford come out of the house with the girl with the long hair and start walking down the driveway. I told you, Mayor, I don't want to see that blonde back on this property again. The girl with the long hair, she turns and she looks at me. She says, "F you." But she said it, okay? Where'd she get that mouth? From her mother, her grandmother, her mother's boyfriend, Sammy? If you're going to do something, then do it to both of them, Mayor, because Sammy's lived there as long as she has. They're both one in that house.
Mr. Primash.
Yes.
That's five minutes.
Okay. All right. Can I say one thing? One quick, one quick one. Mayor, their trampoline in the back of their yard is three feet from my five-foot fence. Ask them to move it back 10 feet because it's going to ruin my $5,600 fence. Thank you.
Hello. Margaret Corrigan, 5930 Decker Road. I don't live on Butternut, but my road is very close to it. Butternut Ridge is a small two-lane road. It already has too much traffic. It leads to our high schools, our middle schools, and our library. Our city park is at the end of the street. There are children walking up and down this road. And the extra cluster homes will lead to much more traffic. And like others have said, this will only be the beginning. In an area where they are already planning on adding a grant-funded mid-block refuge median to create a safer crosswalk for the kids because we know it's unsafe. Flooding already occurs in this area. The road infrastructure is not built to sustain 45 or more new homes. My in-laws live on Porter Road. They're south of Lorraine, and their street is now considered a flood zone. It never was before. This was their parents' home before them. They never had these flooding issues. They have had to add expensive sub-pump systems. They will have trouble selling their home because it is now a flood zone. They pay extra money on their insurance because of this. I live one block over from them. I do not want to have the same problems. 45 or more new homes will make these issues that they are struggling with worse. Also, we are a city of trees. Look at the logo on our city signs, the imagery of our trees. Our elementary schools were named after trees. We are losing matured trees all over the city. They just took down money at the park for the new fields. This plan will remove more of our matured trees. Rezoning a residential area seems unfair to the current residents. If this area is zoned for single-family homes, it should stay that way. If this is a historic area, they should not be building 50 brand-new cluster homes in this area. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments from the audience, we will now move into legislation.
Legislation on third reading, Resolution 202596, introduced by Mayor Jones, a resolution directing the fiscal officer of Cuyahoga County to pay to the City of North Olmsted, Ohio during the year 2026, all money due and owing said city from any collection source and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Councilman Skarle. I move to adopt Resolution 202596 and ask for a second.
Second.
Motion to adopt Resolution 202596 made by Councilman Skarle, seconded by Councilman Limbert. Roll call, please.
Mr. Skarle.
Yes.
Mr. Limbert.
Yes.
Ms. Heeman.
Yes.
Mr. Shimskey.
Yes.
Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Resolution 202596 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Resolution 202597, introduced by Mayor Jones, a resolution dispensing with the RFP process and authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement for professional engineering services with Chagrin Valley Engineering, renewing the terms and conditions of its current agreement with the city through 2028 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President? Councilman Skarle. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-97 and ask for a second.
Second.
Motion to adopt Resolution 202597 made by Councilman Skarle, seconded by Councilman Limbert. Roll call, please.
Mr. Skarle.
Yes.
Mr. Limbert.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Mr. Shimskey.
Yes.
Ms. Heeman.
Yes.
Resolution 202597 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Legislation on second reading, Resolution 2025102, introduced by Mayor Jones, a resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase and finance through the Hotel Motel Fund, 1/20/25 Polaris Ranger XP 1,000 utility vehicle, and further authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to effectuate such purchase and declaring an emergency. Legislation on first reading, Resolution 2025103, a resolution authorizing the Director of Law on behalf of the City of North Olmsted to enter into an agreement with the law firm of Kootag Rock LLP and provide professional, or to provide professional legal services for community and economic development projects and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I introduce in place on first reading and request suspension of the rule requiring three readings and formal committee review.
Mr. President? Councilman Skarle. At this time, I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings and formal committee review for Resolution 2025-103. As this was discussed in caucus this evening and Kootag Rock's legal expertise in the economic development sector is crucial to the city's development, and it's important to execute this agreement as soon as possible. And I ask for a second.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings and formal committee review for Resolution 2025-103 is made by Councilman Skarle, seconded by Councilman Limbert. Roll call, please.
Mr. Skarle.
Yes.
Mr. Limbert.
Yes, with comment. I think one other important note here is that we're essentially keeping the same legal advisement that we have. They're just under a new company from the personnel standpoint.
Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Mr. Shimskey.
Yes.
Ms. Heeman.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
That motion passes by a vote of six to zero. If there is anyone in the audience who wishes to address council regarding Resolution 2025-103 only, please approach the podium now.
Mr. President? Councilman Skarle. Seeing none, I move to adopt Resolution 2025-103 and ask for a second.
Second.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2025103 made by Councilman Skarle, seconded by Councilman Limbert. Roll call, please.
Mr. Skarle.
Yes.
Mr. Limbert.
Yes.
Mr. Shimskey.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Ms. Heeman.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-103 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Resolution 2025104, a resolution authorizing the city engineer to advertise for bids for the award of contract to provide services to install a sanitary manhole with partial flume-measuring device along McKenzie Road as detailed in the specifications on file in the Division of Engineering and authorizing the mayor, following approval of the Board of Patrol, to contract for the same with the lowest and best bidder.
Mr. President, I introduce in place on first reading.
Thank you. Moving into scheduling committee meetings for Tuesday, November 11th, 2025. Councilman Madden, would you like to schedule an environmental control committee meeting?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. I'd like to schedule the environmental control committee meeting for Resolution Number 2025104 at 7:00 p.m. on November 11th and ask for the mayor and/or her designee to be present.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor to excuse the absence of Councilwoman Gilchrist?
So moved.
Motion to excuse Councilwoman Gilchrist made by Councilman Limbert. I didn't hear who had the second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman, Councilman Skarle. Roll call, please.
Mr. Limbert.
Yes.
Mr. Skarle.
Yes.
Mr. Shimskey.
Yes.
Ms. Heeman.
Yes.
Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gilchrist is excused by a vote of six to zero. With the agenda being completed and there being no further business to come before council, this meeting of November 5th, 2025 is adjourned at 8:33 p.m.